Order at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 26, 2022. This meeting is being taped for transcription purposes only, and the minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record for this meeting. Any board member who has a monetary interest or has a conflict, including exportate communication, should disclose now. And I will now ask the Secretary of Calabro. Calabro? Here.
Who?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Rubel?
Here.
And the audience is alternate Schrader.
Here.
Trustee Augustine. zoning inspector Wilson. And is anyone attending virtually?
No.
Any trustee? No trustee virtually. Thank you. All right. I will now, if you could read the legal notice. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 26, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building located at 1410 Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Routes 3 and 303. Subject of the hearing is as follows. An application for variance AP 0270 was submitted by applicant Leon Sampit, architect on behalf of property owners George Sabella and Patricia Hercola of 2668 Stony Hill Road in Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel number 01603C33056, requesting to construct an accessory building at said property in a location that does not meet the side yard setback of 30 feet. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, October 22, 2022, at 10:00 AM. Zoning reference, Chapter 6, District Regulations, Subsections 6R1.4.E and 6R1.6.A.1 of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. Papers of the application and other supportive materials will be available for public viewing from the date of this notice to the date of hearing at the zoning office located in the Administration Building at 1410 Ridge Road, Monday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday, 9:00 AM to noon. Information may also be found on the Hinkley website at www.hinkletwp.org under Community tab, and Township News and Events titled Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend this hearing or to send written comments to the Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals, P.O. Box 344, Hinkley, Ohio, 44233. Log into www.hinkletwp.org for Zoom option to observe/listen only. Must be in person to speak/ participate in meeting. Thank you. And has the notice been sent to the appropriate property owners?
Yes.
Okay. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of Section 519 of the Higher Vice Code and exercises its powers as provided under Chapter 7 and 13 of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to speak must do so from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence address, and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to the hearing. It is at my discretion to limit personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, and/or repetitious statements or testimony or evidence previously given. Disruptive persons will lose the right to remain at this hearing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. This hearing is upon the application of Leon Sampit, architect, on behalf of property owners George Sabella and Patricia Hercola of the property located at 2668 Stony Hill Road in Hinkley, Ohio, for a variance from the enforcement of certain Hinkley Township zoning resolution sections to property owned by the applicant. The application has been submitted, and everyone should have the packet that includes the original variance application, a letter from the homeowner, site maps, and blueprints of the proposed structure. And all are related to the variance that is being requested this evening. Notice of application was properly given in local newspapers, and the application has been available for public review and comment. I will now ask the secretary to, if we have received any phone calls or any communicate correspondence relating to this application?
No correspondence or phone calls. There was one visit to the office, a resident.
All right. I note for the record that not written communication made by known or unknown persons not under oath at a properly noticed hearing is not accepted by the Board of Appeals as testimony. Each member of the Board of Appeals has provided, has been provided a copy of this application and a copy of each of the other documents submitted in support of this application. And at this point, we will now call the board by asking them to respond yes if they have reviewed the application and also conducted a site visit. Calabro? Yes and yes on Saturday.
Twenty-second.
The twenty-second. Okay. Who?
Yes and yes, site inspection twenty-second.
Schlesner?
Yes and yes, site inspection twenty-second.
Schaefer?
Yes, on both. Inspection on Monday, the 24th.
Rubel?
Yes and yes. Well, our original site visit was August 20th, and I also inspected today, 10/26/22.
Thank you. Written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this board. I also note that written communication may include some writing by affidavit, by persons that are not present this evening, and therefore cannot be subjected to cross-examination. These affidavits, therefore, will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the board on this matter. This board does have the power to grant the applicant's request for a variance, and those people that wish to speak must do so from the podium and must state their name and address before addressing the board. We ask the audience to save personal conversations for after the meeting, as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. All right. And at this point, if I would ask the applicant or whoever's representing the applicant to And if I could swear you in?
Yes.
I state your name?
George Sabella.
Patricia Hercola. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and shall answer unto God.
I do.
I do. Thank you. Can you give us, I mean, we've got everything that you submitted. If you want to give us a brief summary of what you'd like to do and any additional information that you haven't included?
I think we've included all the information from the last time when we spoke. This time I was there for, it's made sure that I was there for the, for the visit, site visit on last Saturday. The building that we're proposing to, to build is an additional garage on the other side of our driveway from our existing garage that will be, even with the front of the house, that will be identical to the existing garage, be very aesthetically pleasing. Identical siding, roofing, everything will match as you go up the driveway on each side. It will not be in front of the existing garage per the requirements. It will be used for, to house a car, some, some equipment, lawn equipment that we share. The three houses there, as you guys are familiar with, that were built by the Parks, Roseanne Realty, they, we shared a tractor to take care of all that property. So that tractor becomes very much more convenient, that nobody has to enter into the other person's backyard to use the lawn equipment to maintain the properties. Then it will also include an office for my wife, which she will be using for home office. Our existing garage during the COVID times, my wife went to a CrossFit gym, I had a gym, and we, during the CrossFit days when everything was shut down, we kind of turned our garage into a CrossFit gym. I think you guys were there and saw it. The floor is a silicone floor, there's some mats down there, and there's some motorcycles in there. So there's no room for my car, which sits in the driveway. And, and there is a need for an office. The, there's no possibility of putting an office anywhere else on the property because it's a two-bedroom house, it'd have to go off the back of the house, you'd have to go through one of the bedrooms if anybody was staying there to get to an office. So that just doesn't make any sense. We've kind, we've contacted a couple architects, we use Leon Sampit, and this is the recommendation. The variance we're requesting is three and a half, well, it would be about four feet off the property line. I know that the requirement's 30 feet. Some of our neighbors are here, there was a couple more neighbors here at the first meeting, they were here to show their support for such a thing. I know Mr. Park has really done a lot to make that area a lot more aesthetically pleasing with the trees, houses that he's, he's built on there. And he came to the last meeting to support us, because he thinks that this is going to be done properly, look nice, increase property values. And it's, it's a good thing for, for us functionally, car's in the driveway, people have offices.
Additionally, I do, my work, I do see patients virtually, and having the office in a separate building does kind of help with the privacy and HIPAA regulations. My husband also works from home too quite often and does meetings. We've tried it at home, and it's, both of us going is, is a little bit distracting at times, so we felt that this was the ideal state too, since we were going to build a garage, I can put an office on the backside, so I can kind of see patients in a little bit more of a private environment.
I, I know four feet is closer to the property line than the very, than, than we're permitted to, that's why we're asking for the variance. But we assure you that, I think the appearance of the property will look better after the building is constructed, it'll, it's going to look very nice. And as, as a resident of the community, I'm more interested in the appearance of, than the location. The property to our south, although owned by Roseanne Realty, is occupied by Mr. and Mrs. Gregory, who, who said that they, they've sent me a text with their, for their support, they share the tractor, and, and are very-
Is that the one right next door to you?
Yes, I think he's the one that told you about the property line, when you had the first meeting, which again, I apologize for, but I did call that week and say, I'm not going to be here. If you guys have any questions, please call me remotely, and I apologize for that. Anyway, that's, that's in the past, but, so he's very much in support of this because it gives him access to, to the lawn equipment that we use, makes it much more convenient. He's a general contractor, and he's, he's added his input on how this building may have been laid out. And I think we've been beating it up for about two years between the architects, the general contractors we've used. And I think we've, we've just beat it into the ground to where this would be the best for us, the property, the community, the neighbors. That's about it.
Who wants to start?
Couple questions.
Yes, sir.
You said that it would be beneficial to the community, and it would make the property look better. How, how is, explain that, because I don't know how it'd be beneficial to the community or how it'd make the property look any better. Explain, elaborate on that.
It's going to be a very expensive building, so I think it's going to increase the property values, which is going to be better for the community. I think that as property values go up, tax revenues go up. I think if the community includes our immediate neighbors who are in support of it, and the ones that aren't here are in support of it, and they also have access to that building to help keep their properties looking nice and, and to, to be able to use that equipment. I don't see any drawbacks. I think if, I've, I've driven around and seen lots of properties where it almost looks like in a state where you pull up the driveway and you have the garages on each side, and you pull up in between them, I think that's a very pleasing look. It's not a shed, it's not a garage. It's, it's, it's going to be a nice structure. Again, I think it's going to, the amount of money we're putting into it will increase the property value, which benefits, I believe, everyone.
Well-
Go ahead.
So I was just going to say, it, it's not the purpose of this board to judge the look of the, the building or, or any of that, it, it does seem very nice. I mean, what we're here for is the fact that you're asking for a pretty big variance, 26 feet, over 26 feet. And in your opinion, I mean, is, do you think it could, could go anywhere else where you wouldn't have to be here for this variance?
Well, like I was telling you, we have used a couple of architects, some general contractors, and been working on this for a couple of years. We've looked at putting it in the backyard, then there'd be a driveway going into the backyard, there's nowhere that it can go because of the, the septic system, the mound for the septic system. I think from-
There would be room for a drive.
I think from an appearance standpoint, well, the drive would have to go over the septic system.
Okay.
So they're, they're really, I think putting a driveway on the other side of the house would look, I think would look, personally would look terrible, to have a driveway going up into a yard that with, you can't see where it goes, and just concrete going into a backyard, then you're going to have a, a pretty big building in a backyard that's going to look-
Are you talking about the north side of the house?
If we went on the north side of the house, you have a driveway going up that side.
Okay.
If you, if you talk, you know, I, I think that would just look terrible. I think a monstrosity in the backyard, this way, this is a mirror of the garage, it actually looks pleasing, it's functional, it's, it's functional for us and for others. I don't know how a driveway, we can't go over our septic system, we could hug the property line, but I, I believe that, I don't think that that's, would be much acceptable either. That would require some substantial landscaping, and then we'd have a very large building in our backyard, it would have to be in the middle of the backyard, 35 feet or 30 feet off the property line. So we have kind of worked on this for a long period of time. I, I've got all my drafts and drawings and given them to the architects, and they said this would, this is what you really want to do. We, we then realized that the variance is substantial, but I, I do think it would be worth it.
So it'd be a monstrosity in a backyard, but pleasing up front?
Yes.
Right? I can't get that through my head. Anyways, my problem is that it is very substantial.
Yes.
And I have a big problem with that, for now and for the future. I mean, that's something that, if you've got the, you've got the property, you can do other things. The fact that it's helping the neighbors and that is, has nothing to do with this, it's not a, it's not a hardship anywhere down the line. I might be open to maybe a little bit less substantial. I mean, if we move that like 10 foot from the line, would that be a problem? I mean, I was looking at this, the drawing here and doing a little sketching in here, and seems like there'd still be enough room in here to move your vehicles around and that, and, and having a 10-foot variance instead of a three and a half, I, I could be more apt to like that more than a three and a half. It's, you've got a maintenance problem there, your neighbor right there now is fine with it, but what happens down the line when either you are gone or they are gone and someone comes up, there's a problem there, because you don't have a maintenance alley there to work on that building. So I have a problem with the three and a half foot. So that's what I say, and I might be, personally, be more inclined, if you may be like a 10-foot, I might think about.
I appreciate that, I really do. I, it's a 20, it's, the depth is 23 feet from the dra, from the edge of the driveway. So to go 10 feet off the property line would take about seven or eight feet away from the, that 23, leaving you 15 with the walls, you couldn't get a car in there.
But you could come in on top of the, the existing concrete, because actually, in your, in your origin, in the original site plan, when the house was built, the concrete that's showing is 25 feet. And minimum for a turnaround is about 24 feet, right?
Yeah, I thought it was 27, yeah.
That is, yeah. So, but currently what you have is 38 or 39 feet?
Just about 38.
Yeah. 37 feet, 11 and a half inches. So I understand that, you know, pushing the bill, it would make, to Dave's point there, if you came in 10 feet, the building would be narrow, which wouldn't make any sense, you know, because you need to get a car in there. However, the building could be moved towards the other garage.
That's just another six and a half foot.
Right?
So-
I know you have to cut concrete, and there's all that going on, and, and you're trying to salvage that, but I mean, there's still enough room to turn around, right?
It would be very tight, well, with the car that my wife has now backing up, it's, it's a very tight turn to hit where the, the tree is, because there's those trees that, that come out.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a very tight turn. Our architect said that you need a minimum of 27 feet is what he said to turn around, and I know we have about, what'd you say, 34?
But even 27 feet, you have 37, there's still, there's still another 10 feet.
Yeah, and 27, he thought would be tight. With those trees there, it's hard to make that-
Okay, but even 30 feet.
Okay.
Okay, but if you do 30 feet, you've got still another eight feet plus the four feet, so we're still at 12 feet from this, the property line as opposed to three and a half feet that you're asking.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my, my point, to your point too, is that there is a possibility that it can be done. This is the most desirable, what you presented.
Yes.
But that's also the most substantial variance that you're asking for too. And I guess, what, what, what do you, what, in your, I try to look for, what, what is your hardship? Because I mean, in, in requesting a variance, there, there needs to be a hardship. So what's, what's your hardship?
We needed, we need an additional office and a place to park our cars. Our garage has been converted. With the COVID thing going on, our garage's been converted, and my car sits outside. So, and with my wife's administrative job at the clinic, we, we need an additional office. My, my concern with, I mean, I'm, I'm open to anything, and I appreciate you entertaining our, you know, our request. My concern of moving it closer to the house is with the peaks of the, first of all, the landscaping is set up to make it look very nice the way it is, with the way the driveway contours. So from an appearance standpoint, to salvage six feet from the property line, I think would not look as good from street appeal. I also think that when you're matching peaks on the two properties, when you have the width there, it looks nice because of the way the contour and the landscaping is, bringing it closer, I think, would make it look too close. There would be a, a narrow, it would look like a, a little tunnel in between the two buildings. I, I don't think it would look nice from the street, and, and I don't see any benefit of not using that additional six feet. It might be to gain six feet from the edge of the property, but I think you lose a lot of curb appeal aesthetics, which, you know, which we're trying to make that area look very nice. We really care about how our property looks. Don't think it would look nice with the two peaks that close together. The scale of it is perfect. And, you know, with the architect saying, what, our, our goal was to leave the scale so that the exist, the new peak is going to be six inches lower than the existing peak and a couple inches back. So it's all scaled perfectly, is how we came up with the variance from three and a half feet there. To move it closer to the house would throw all the scales off, and I don't think it would look very nice. And then it's going to, all it's going to do is leave an additional six feet to the property line, which is unusable.
Mr. Sabella?
Almost a quick-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just, just a, a couple things. Was there a consideration of, since you're not using the existing garage as a garage currently, of just building on to the existing garage and doing an addition to the house? So that the variant, it's, you just have one building instead of two, and you're not so close to the property line?
From the appearance of it, and yeah, we did talk about, about bringing, just going off that and how it would look. I, I, we could not come up with the way, with the, with the roof lines, with the way the property is laid out with the landscaping, how you got the side door going into the house, so now the side door is going to take you into another building. The flow, and then the sidewalk going into the backyard, the flow just didn't make any sense. Going through the garage to get to the new building didn't make any sense. This just seemed, like I said, after looking at it for a couple years, it seemed to check all the boxes, that you get an office, you can house your vehicles inside, it's still on your property, it looks great, it's visually, you know, appealing. It just made a lot of sense, and everyone we've talked to thought it was just, it would look, really look just outstanding. I mean, it'd really be nice.
And just a quick que, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, just one more thing. So the county records show the property transferred in April, have you lived there longer than that?
Yes, we bought it from Roseanne Realty in April. We lived there, it was built, we moved in in 2018.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Last month I asked you about putting an addition on the back, and you said the only way where you could put it was going through a bedroom.
Okay.
Do you have a full basement on this house?
We do.
What's going on down there that you can't have your exercise equipment in a small office down there? I mean, I'm on Zoom calls, and like my financial advisor, he's always at his dining room table. I was able to tell exactly when he was remodeling his kitchen, because that was the background. So I'm just wondering why you-
Yeah, we have that for storage. We have storage down.
We have storage down there. It was the way it was laid out when they built the house, they, they built it, we bought from them, so we didn't have anything to do with the building of the house. There's nowhere down there that, in the storage area, that you could add, add on to that. We're also trying to get my wife a home office where she's, we have a dog, I work from home, we're trying to give her some privacy, because she does have virtual patient, she works at the Cleveland Clinic. So we're trying to give her a little privacy away from the home, so she doesn't have to drive up to the clinic.
Because this, this is a huge variance. I, I would say it passes substantial as far as definition goes. But when I was involved in zoning up in North Royalton, if you're going through a parking lot for a store or whatever, they wanted 24 feet between bumper to bumper of vehicles that are parked. And 24 feet was, at that time, they said enough, you know, room to, you know, back out a car and all that. And most cars have done nothing but get, got smaller in the meantime. So I'm not quite sure why your architect is saying 27, you know, but-
But even the 27 would get you much closer to, for us to not consider it such a substantial variance. I think that's the point of all this.
You'd be over, you'd have over 30 feet.
What was originally submitted, and what was originally, and then what was done as far as the drive that's there and the cement that's there, it was originally 25 feet, and now we're at 38 feet. So all we're asking, and I understand, it's, it's a beautiful home, and it's a beautiful setting. And I understand, because actually, I think even in your own, you stated, can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting of a variance? And you said no, because it would not make use of the existing driveway. So that's kind of, that's your hardship. Your hardship is that you want to make, that's the only place you can put this, because you want to keep the cement that's there and the nice space that's there and everything.
Well, there's-
I just that, but then we have an issue with this being a substantial variance. I mean-
Right. There's a, there's a substantial amount of land from our property line to the next house, so we're not, it's not an intrusion on them. It's kind of, it is unused space to us. The way the landscaping is laid out, and the way the driveway is laid out, it's set up for the way it is. The, the, the setting that we're putting this building on is pretty much, if you look at it, it's laid out, it, it speaks to it, it's perfect for that kind of a thing. I'm afraid, as a citizen of the community, if we put it on the driveway that close to the house, if I was driving by, I'd say, why did they do that? I, I would see a garage by a garage. Now, there's-
You would see a garage and a driveway that they can come out this way and they can come out that way, that's what you would see.
Well, the driveway goes straight up, and then it contours into the garage. So the, the driveway is only a one-lane driveway, and this building would be on the edge of the driveway. So you'd have a one-lane driveway, the appearance of a one-lane driveway separating two buildings. I don't think that would look very nice. We drove around and saw a number of properties, and then some other neighborhoods where they've done this, and actually on Stony Hill where they've done this. And it looks beautiful, that's where we got the idea. And there's some properties where there are a lot of-
Well, they may have the width to do that, though.
There's, there's a couple properties we saw on, on Waymouth, I think 2590 Waymouth, where it is, it looks like it's on the property line, because it's staked, and you can see that the garage is on the property line, and the garage is angled. But we've seen a number of properties, driving around, looking at it. Now, there's some nice-looking properties that we're kind of trying to mirror, saying that this is how we wanted to look, and we've actually wanted to talk to those residents and say, who'd you use, how'd you come up with this? It looks beautiful. And then there's some prop, some, some garages that were built, where I, on Waymouth Road, there's two, and I just took my wife by them the other day, where the, the garage is on the property line. You can see the stakes in the front yard, I think it is 2590 Waymouth Road, you can see the stake in the front yard, you look back, there's the garage. And the thing is, is the garage doesn't look nice, it is a, like a, it's, looks like a slant.
Aesthetics has nothing to do with our vote.
Okay.
Okay, we don't take that into consideration. We look at the zoning code, and we say, what does the zoning code say? And then that's how we determine it. We, we don't care what color the building is or, or anything like that. Oh, and then you mentioned about all this land between your house and the next house. All that land belongs to your neighbor.
Right.
It doesn't belong to you.
Correct. We're not, we're not, we're not on their property. We're, we're enough off their property.
You're within four feet of their property.
Yes. He's a general contractor. Yeah, he's a general contractor. He said,
It's going to be.
He said, it would be great if you could just bring it up to their property lines. We wouldn't have to maintain this thing here. But he said, you know, three and a half feet, four feet.
To Dave's point, and every zoning inspector will tell us that we allow fences on, right on the property line. So they come in and they go, hey, I'm going to put it right here. And I'm sure Tom will tell you, he says this too, is you go, well, when you need to replace a board on that, you know, fence, what are you going to do? You're going to be walking on somebody else's property. And they say, well, I get along fine with my neighbor. And then you ask them, well, who's the next guy that's going to own that? Might be the neighbor from hell.
Right.
Okay. Don't you think maybe you should have some room to do some maintenance work on it? And they generally, they move the fence in, you know, four or five feet. And one of the things nice about Hinckley is you can do that. The lots aren't 60 feet wide.
Right.
You know, so with a minimal 175 foot frontage, moving that fence in a little bit, they got the ability to do it.
I think four or five feet would give you plenty of room to maintain anything you need to do there. It's just going to be the siding. And when I'm talking to the general contractor next door, Mr. Gregory, he's, of course, like I said, it doesn't matter if he cares or not. But he said, the gutters will be, everything is going to be on your property.
Be right in line.
There won't be any, any intrusion spatially or physically onto their land. And it's pretty much unused land.
Well, if you'd put a ladder up on that, you'd be in the, to go by code, you could not put a ladder in within three and a half feet to work on that house.
Yeah, the ladder will come right back on top of you once you start.
OSHA code or just common sense code, you would be intruding on the neighbor's property. And today's neighbor is fine. Tomorrow's neighbor may not be fine. I mean, I definitely have a problem with this. And, you know, looking at this, you know, I'm willing, I don't know about everybody else, but I mean, 10 foot, if you move that thing six and a half foot, I don't think you're going to lose anything in here. You're not going to lose the way it looks. I just, I mean, I, you're, you're trying to sell it to us that it's not going to look good. But six and a half feet, I, I just aesthetically, which is not our problem, I think it's still going to look good personally.
Can, can I just ask you?
Sure.
If we're asking you if you can negotiate with us, you know, work with us, I mean, are you pretty fixed on this three and a half feet? It's got to be this way in order for it to be done.
Well, that's what we'd really.
That's what you would prefer.
Of course.
But if you came in and basically what you said, where you're coming in where the driveway goes out, if you came in and pushed the building towards the other garage, giving you more feet on the sideline here. I mean, this is where the yellow line is. That's kind of what it would look like from the street. You're saying that's not desirable. It would just ruin the whole.
Look, we could, we could, as I was going to say, we certainly look at that, that contour where it comes out, if I may.
Yes, please.
This contour where it comes out right here, I think that makes aestheticity, it looks like it's not going to be off of this driveway. If we could still have.
But what's wrong with it being off that driveway? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I don't think that's what the way the beds are, the landscaping that would look right. It would actually look like. Can we split the difference? Can we split a little bit of a contour and cut the difference out?
So what's the difference going to be? I mean, because I was trying to figure out the scale is what, a quarter inch? I mean, what is the footage? So what would that be?
I don't know. I don't know, but if we could still keep some of that contour, then I think we'd be accomplishing. We'd be, I don't know what the OSHA guidelines are for putting the ladder up, if it's on that size of the building, six feet.
Does everybody else understand where I'm at with this?
Yes. It would be very close to the edge of the driveway, the building, if you come up with about six and a half feet. Because I know I, I scaled it off at home. You'd be coming in about here.
Yeah. Could we consider splitting the difference so there's some contour left in the driveway? Instead, so that it doesn't look like it's coming right off the edge of the driveway? I think to have that look of it makes a big difference to me for me. You know, that's not the appearance that we're talking about here, but I think it would make a difference. And then if we could just match the OSHA requirements of what a ladder would.
Well, I'm just saying that done in the future, and it's not only OSHA, it's common sense to put a ladder up.
Right, right.
Now, I get that. To work on that building and maintenance is something we have to look at because of the neighbor down the line. And you say it's dead property. Well, a lot of people have property that just has grass strips along the side. That's not a, it's not a deal breaker there. I mean, that's common, that's common. I mean, I just, it's just very substantial. And I do believe that you can do this. You got to turn around. You got 37 and a half feet. We're talking about another six and a half feet. So you actually got 31 feet in there to come in this way, that way. My personal opinion.
Well, look, you asking for three and a half feet or actually over 26 feet variance. It's substantial. But even if you come in and it's a 10 foot variance, it's still a substantial variance. We're still, you know, it's still over 60%. So I mean, either way, but I mean, it's your property. We're trying to work with you.
I appreciate that.
And I, although this board doesn't set a precedent for the next person that comes along and, you know, wants a two foot, I mean, a 28 foot variance, it, it will be out there just like you drove around and you said, oh, you know, I see that, you know, we're not setting a precedent, but then we kind of are. Because what is the reasoning behind us giving you a 26 foot variance other than it's not going to look pretty?
We understand your situation and what you want to do, but you get, we gotta go by the book and by common sense here. I mean, you could still.
There's got to be a hardship. There's got to be a reason other than.
Well, you know, in all honesty, you know, you're talking about putting a driveway on the right side of the property and then coming back and you did say you could build a house back there or not a house, but the accessory building back there. And it wouldn't look right. Driven past some very, they almost look like office building homes. And they got, you know, three driveways, you know, two driveways. You know, if you take the whole, you know, setup. And I don't think anybody drives by and says that that doesn't look right by having a second driveway going back to an auxiliary building. So you're, you've already said that there is a solution other than building it where it is.
You know, I'm going to take that back if you don't mind.
Okay.
Because if you went into our backyard, you know, the septic system, the drip mound goes almost from bed to bed. So the driveway would have to go along the property line, you know, and then there's the swale that comes down. So the, the new building is going to have to go in front of the mound, which would be right off the back of the house or on the backside of the mound, which would take the driveway all the way to the back of the property.
Which.
What we're trying to say is that that's not uncommon in Hinckley. They have the buildings in the back. Very, so I mean, you're saying that, you know, this.
I think with the drip mound, I don't think it would.
Okay, here's.
Is, is an option to take this entire building and flip it this way? Is that an option? Is that? Since you've been thinking about it for three years and you're architect.
Thinking it, which way?
Literally, taking this and putting it over here.
Oh, that's where the septic system, that's where the tanks are.
Okay.
And that's where the, I guess this, the soil engineers required that those tanks be put there and the mound be put in the backyard.
Yeah, right.
He's, yeah, there's.
You can't do that.
You can't do anything there. But you're talking about these drip systems in here, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So you can see what I'm talking about. And this is the one where they have the color part for the septic systems. Okay, this is your property line here where it says 50 foot rear yard setback. Now, this is your second system, I guess, is on somebody, or no, here. This is your, your property line. So that's your second one. This is your first one. What, and what is this gravel path?
Our prop, there's a fence right here that's owned, that is owned by, it's on our property. It's not ours. This track is on our property, but it's not ours. There's either an easement granted.
An easement.
This is a lot, this is owned by Roseanne Realty. Roseanne Realty built the three houses. So our property actually ends at this line. Even though we own this, we don't, there's a, there's a 10 foot fence right here.
So basically, you're not even allowed to walk on it because you got to climb over a fence?
Well, they allow us. They put a gate out here for us. They allow us. So we can get there. We're permitted to use a portion of that land. We're, we're all good friends. But their fence goes right along here. So our mound, there's, that's the amount of space between our mound and there. And then of course, from the house to that mound, there's a swale that was required by the builder that they have to go down from the drip mound. And.
Right, right.
I can't build it. I'm not permitted to build on that. Then you have the mound, then you have a fence.
Yeah, now, now that I know that story, yeah, that kind of rules out anything in the back of the house, between the septic systems, the way they run and all that bit.
Yeah. I really appreciate you, you're entertaining this and your offer of moving it in and, you know, we, we have to obviously listen to you.
Well, you're saying, you know, let's split the difference so because you still want this.
A little contour to the driveway, I think would make a big difference. I know you guys are, it's not the appeal, the curb appeal that's important to this hearing. But, you know, you see what Mr. Parks done with those trees by the water tower. Appearance does mean a lot to us and.
Well, we're not an architectural review board in that sense, but I mean, I think, I think it does matter how it looks. I mean, of course, you know, of course it does. But I mean, we're not, we can't tell you, you have to make it this color or that or use this material or, you know, I think that's what was meant.
Right. And it looks very nice. And I, I think it would still look very nice if you were willing to give some and let us vote on a 10 foot. I think it still would look nice. I think it'd be functional. I know you like your little curve there, but.
I mean, if you want, the architect isn't here.
No.
I mean, what are we talking about as far as, you know, how far in you could come? Again, even doing a 10 foot, asking for a 20 foot variance where you're leaving 10 feet for the sideline, that's still substantial.
Yes.
But we're trying to.
Trying to work with you.
And, and making you use your property the way you want.
Thank you.
Everybody should have that right, but.
So I.
There's a code for a reason.
Sure. So the, the three and a half, so you're saying the 10 foot code, so you're bringing it in six and a half feet farther than what we're asking.
Minimum.
On the driveway.
Right.
And possibly, well, that's Dave's talking.
That's my thought. I'd be willing.
Four members on the board.
I'd be willing to work with you because of what your situation is. I understand it. I look for what it's going to look like. I understand the working situation. I'm willing to consider a 10 foot or a 20 foot variance, 10 foot from the line. But the three and a half is just, just too substantial for me.
Well, I really appreciate you, you know, you working with us on that and can we get that done? If that's our option, we go back to the architect and see how it looks and I think we would be.
So regarding next steps.
If we would, if we would change your request to be a 10 or 20 foot variance as opposed to 26 and a half, and then it cannot be done, so do you want to consult with your architect? What do you want to do?
What are our options at this point? Can the board approve a 10 foot, 20 foot variance at this point? Or do we have to go back to square one?
No, you don't have to go back to square one. No.
You could go for a continuance.
If you want to, if you want to speak with him and continue it, we can do that. Or.
You want to make it work with the 10 foot?
You know, if you can't make it work with a 10 foot variance, wouldn't it be really accomplished? You know, if we approve that. And I'm not saying that everybody else is going to go for that.
Again, that's our opinion. The whole board's got a vote on it.
Sure.
Can we get that vote? I mean, is there something we can do now?
An acceptable practice. We kind of need your guidance here with acceptable next steps.
Go for a vote right now. You're stuck with the results. If you go with a continuance, that will give you 30 days to consult with the architect and say, hey, can this be done? And if it can't, you better have a pretty good argument for this board. And, you know, it's come, and then come in here and talk to him. And then we can listen to what he has to say. You know, as to why 10 feet can't be done. But that's basically the two options that, the way I look at it.
If you're asking about, if you guys are, are saying that that's the possibility for you guys to vote on and he's going to say, we need a couple more feet. And you, you don't think we have a hardship case enough now? There's not going to be a hardship change then either.
No, is that?
Yeah, that's pretty correct.
Yeah. So I mean, we can make the architect, like you need to figure it out.
Yeah, just say, you know, this is how it's got to be.
Figure it out. If you accept 10 feet, then we have to figure that out. We'll retrofit the situation to 10 feet if that's the case. Or the variance to 20. We'll have to figure it out.
I mean, I, I'm just going back to this is a minimum two acre lot and really it's, it's less than two acres if you look at your easement. And I, I just don't see how it would be a reasonable expectation to fit an outbuilding the way this is situated.
In the back, yes, I agree with you.
I'm, or on the sides. I mean, I don't.
On the side. And so this is why we're trying to figure out whether or not, you know, we want to approve this or not.
So what, so Lindsay's back to have.
Because he, he really can't put anything in the back there. But it still only just comes down to, are we going to allow him, you know, three and a half feet, 10 feet, you know, whatever.
And this is right at the 90, I mean, this is right at the street setback too. So it's not like it's 500 feet back. It's right there. It's house, garage, house.
Yes.
It's, it's tight.
Yes.
Even with 10 feet, in my opinion.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. Even 10 feet, you know, 20 foot variance is still very substantial.
Yeah. And, and this board doesn't have any legal obligation to grant them the variance. We can just say, hey, you know, you bought the house, you know, and live with it. I mean, we are under no obligation to grant the variance or to turn down a variance.
That's why we appreciate you entertaining, even listening to us here.
Well, I think if, if we take a vote on a 20 foot variance and let's say you go back to your architect and they can't, it doesn't work, it doesn't fit or whatever. I mean, I, I, I'd like to know, you know, you still want to keep this, whatever you're calling it, this curve going in, this jog? How far in can they come? See, I wish he was here or somebody could answer that. I mean, you know, I think Dave just threw this 10 out there. I mean.
Well, it would be a matter of, I would just like to keep the contour just from, I think, aesthetic purposes. But if having a place to put this equipment so that we can park a car inside, not leave the car in the driveway and having an office for my wife is the most important thing. If we've got to move it closer to our house or even make the 23 foot, 21 foot and move it in four feet, as long as we're 10 feet off the property line, we'll make that work as the homeowner. We're obviously the ones hiring the architect. So we appreciate you, you giving us that opportunity and we'll figure out how that's got to be. Of course, this is the best case scenario for us, but I understand that you, that's not.
You're talking about the 23 feet depth chopping.
So, so if we bring it, if you're telling me that we need to bring it in six and a half feet, maybe we only bring it in four and a half feet onto the driveway and make it a 21 foot depth or something along the lines. We can work that situation out with the architect if you give us the opportunity to build 10 feet off the property line. Obviously, we'd love the three and a half feet, but I understand what you're saying. Okay, completely.
So how would you like to proceed?
Can we go with the 10 foot off the property line?
So you want to change your request or modify it, I should say, to, where's the? So, you want to change your request or modify it, I should say, to where's the-
From 3.47 to 10.
From 3.47?
Yes.
To 10 feet? Mm-hmm. That's what we would like to do, and we can-
Or a 20-foot. Yeah.
Okay, well, we can do that, and we can do the Duncan-
20-foot variance.
Yeah. Well, before we, okay, is there any, is there anything else that you want to contribute to all of us?
Do we want to have any input from the zoning?
Yeah, that's what I would like, I would like to, if there's anybody in the audience would like to step up. Tom, anything on your part?
I agree. I think it's a good compromise to come in with a 10-foot. I would agree with you thinking on that.
I mean, you agree that the three and a half is substantial?
It is.
Very substantial, yes.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on anything? You can sit down, yeah, sure.
Were you aware of the 30-foot before all this started, or?
No.
Okay.
No, we, no, we wouldn't have, the amount of money we've already spent on getting to this point, and then when we came to get the permit, that's when it's all started. And that's totally our fault.
Okay, there is no one else? Do we want to do the Duncan factors? Any other comments from the board? Lindsey, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. You ready?
Ready.
Okay. Will the property yield a reasonable return, or can there be a beneficial use of the property without the variance?
Rubel?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Zalesny?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes. Is the variance substantial?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Zalesny?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes, and that's based on the 10 feet.
Rubel?
Yes.
All right. Will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered, or will adjoining property suffer substantial detriment if the variance is granted?
Zalesny?
I say yes.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Uh, yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services? Who?
No.
Calabro?
No.
Rubel?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Zalesny?
No.
Did the property owner purchase the property with the knowledge of the zoning restrictions?
Calabro?
Uh, no, as testified.
Rubel?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Zalesny?
No.
Who?
No.
Can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting of a variance?
Rubel?
Yes.
Schaefer?
No. Yes. Yes.
Calabro?
No. Does the variance preserve the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement and will substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Zalesny?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Calabro?
Yes.
Rubel?
No.
All right. Any person adversely affected by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Vindana County and the Grants that such decision was unreasonable and unlawful. And at this point, do you want to do a resolution?
Yeah. I submit a motion for variance, AP 0270, that was submitted by Leon Sampat, architect on behalf of property owners George Sabella and Patricia Burkala of 2668 Stony Hill Road, Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel 01603C33056, requesting to construct an accessory building at the said property in a location that does not meet the side yard setback of 30 feet. Proposed setback will be 10 feet and a variance of 20-foot. Zoning reference, Chapter 6, subsection 6R1 dot 4 dot E and 6R1 dot 6 dot A dot 1.
All right. A yes, simple majority with a quorum president is in favor of the applicant. And I know simple majority or a tie vote denies the applicant's request. So, at this point, let us take a vote.
Calabro?
Yes.[1674.16]